Welcome to the Wednesday, December 15, 2021. Virtual meeting of Thurston County Planning Commission. Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory commission to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters. Such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. I think commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners commissioners. Who are the final decision makers? All planning commission meetings are open to the public citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on these topics from which the public have not been held. So let's get a introduction of the planning commissioners. And my name is Jim Simmons. I represent District Three. So Scott.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Doug.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Eric.
Eric Casino, District Two.
And Kevin.
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Thanks, guys. So I'm looking to get an approval of the agenda for today.
I'll move.
Seconded.
It's been moved. Moved in second to approve the agenda for today. Are there any other comments or additions or subtractions? All those in favor signified by raising your hand. Let's see it. Make sure we get everybody and Kevin. Okay. Let's, can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December one, two thousand twenty one?
I'll move.
Seconded.
Are there any changes or anything like that needed to be done on that document? So all those in favor, well, let's signify by saying aye since we don't see Kevin.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no. So we're moving into our public communications. Portion, this is a chance for the audience to speak on any issues that have not been brought up before in a in a public hearing. Let me get to the right place here. So is there anybody? Oh, wait, hang on a sec. Sorry. For this virtual meeting, please choose to raise your hand often if you wish to address the planning commission. You are dialing in press nine to raise your hand. Chair hosts will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose six to unmute yourself. The three minute timer will show on the video screen to help keep track of time. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call three six zero nine seven two six seven eight five. And Paulie there has the the timer. And you'll see it. It kind of starts in green, goes to yellow with thirty seconds left. And goes to red when your three minutes are up. So please remember that this is your chance to to speak up to to us as as a planning commissioners, finding commission. And and this is your chance to do that. I apologize. Three minutes seem kind of short sometimes, but this is what our system has. So is there anybody out there from the attendees that would like to speak on the subject? Not seen any hands as of yet. I'll give it another chance. Oh. Okay, I think that's you, Christie.
I just wanted to say good evening. Happy holidays to all of you, since I seem to be sort of a fixture around here. And I wanted to thank you, Jim, for for your tenacity and hanging with us. For our wireless committee meetings, really do appreciate that. I know it's one more meeting you had to do. And didn't take that for granted. And Kevin, I know you were able to join us on the last one and appreciate you being there for that as well. And just supporting us to have our our community. Group for for wireless. So and thanks to all of you. I know it's a long nights and lot of research that you do all year long. So hopefully, twenty twenty two will not be quite as intense and maybe shoreline master plan will be behind and hopefully wireless will be not as challenging. So anyway, just wanted to say thanks and happy holidays to you guys.
Thanks, Christie. And from my perspective, it's always great to have your input. You you bring a lot to the table here. So we appreciate that and thank you for your kind words. Anybody else out there that would like to speak, please raise your hand? I'm not seeing anybody. I'll give it one more shot. Anybody out there in the part attendees would like to speak to before us? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we are going to move on. Hopefully I didn't miss anybody. And I've not seen any hands. So Andrew, you're up.
Okay, great. Good evening, planning commissioners. Andrew Defobus interim senior planner with community planning. So tonight we will finish reviewing the options that were called out in the draft shoreline master program that went to public hearing before the planning commission. And I'll ask planning commission which direction you would like to go. We'll then have a discussion about agriculture in the shoreline master program. We've received numerous public comments on this topic. And I know that there are planning commission members who want to pursue that as well. So all the work that you were doing tonight is in support of preparing your formal recommendation on the shoreline mass program to the board accounting commissioners. So with that, I'll go ahead and share my screen and we'll launch into the draft. Previously on planning commission, we left off right before we got down into. Standards for graded docks. So that's what we'll pick up tonight. So we're here in the development standards for for mooring structures. And one of the one of the discussions planning commission had prior to going to public hearing was whether there should be differences in standards for docks in the marine environment versus lakes when it comes to requiring a graded surface on those docks. And the purpose of requiring that grading is to allow light transmission into the water to benefit fish. But you know, the conversation was, are all environments the same? Do they all have the same requirements? So this change was actually made in the text already. So you know, there was left in here as an option for public hearing to get feedback from the public. But in this instance, staff already has made the change to the draft. So you know, the question would be, is this planning commission want to keep that change? I wouldn't need to necessarily make any additional changes. Staff are working on determining how we will implement this change if it stays in. What process we will use to determine if a lake contains salmon or not. So any docks in the marine environment are going to require grading, but in in lakes, not all would. The State Department of Fish and Wildlife is the our data source for salmon occupancy. And they are also our technical resource to specifically weigh in on individual applications. And that is done formally through the hydraulic project approval process that DFW has to do for these projects. But there may also be an opportunity for for us to for staff to be able to contact them and get feedback on whether a particular project is in an area that has concern for salmon or not. The state standards for docks do require grading for salmon bearing lakes and they do require it for marine waters. So once it gets to DFW, that will be their requirement. The you know, the other consideration is in those lakes that we don't believe support salmon or not documented to, would we be requiring grading? As written, this draft would not. And so I'll pause there. I don't know if there's any. I would see if there's any any direction or request from the planning commission to alter the text. Otherwise.
Well, Andy, has DFW given you a list of which lakes they consider salmon baron in Thurston County yet? Or do they only address that as applications come in?
There is a they do have a shortlist that they use internally. So there is a resource that they can refer to when they're looking at HPA requirements. But there there really are, I believe, only, I want to say, three lakes in Thurston County that require it. And two that have anadromous access and actually have fish in them. And then a third that has Summit Lake, which does not have, as I understand it, access down to the sound. But it does have resident kokani and those are are of concern. So those the grading would be required there. I believe it's only those three lakes, though.
You you wouldn't happen to know what those were off the top of your head?
I have to go back and look. I do have it, but I don't want to. I don't want to misquote it. I think it was Summit Lake and then Scott Lake, and I can't remember the third one, are the only three that the state would would consider to be lakes that have that salmon issue. And like I said, I'm trying to figure out and working with DFW staff, working with our per our project permitting staff and management as to exactly how the draft can address that versus what sort of guidance would we put alongside the draft for staff? Because that's something that will change over time potentially, right? There could be a change in the status of these lakes. And so we wouldn't want to bake it all into the draft necessarily. But we would want to have it clear for staff reviewing permits. You know, where are the data sources you were using and how are you going about answering that question as to which standards would apply?
I I think that would be good information for us to have if we could. But even with that information, I am of the mind to not require the grading in non salmon baron lake. So the way it's written is is great for me.
Okay, what do the what do other folks think?
This is Kevin. Weren't there public comments about inaccuracies related to where salmon were located?
Yes, yeah, we did receive some comments on that front. So there were concerns about specifically Lake Lawrence comes to mind and that the supporting documents for the shoreline master program. Namely, the inventory and characterization states that there are salmon in Lake Lawrence. And so the a couple of things on that, you know, I went back and I've now spoken to or sent email out to all our project permitting staff and kind of asked them, what data sources are you using? And specifically, do you look at this twenty thirteen document, you know, in your review? And by and large, people, our planners are not looking at that information. They're looking at our geo data service, which has the latest data in it from the state of Washington. And you know, the other folks will use like wild fish conservancy sources like that. But by and large, they're not relying on on that 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 information in inventory and characterization. And so from an anecdotal standpoint, you know, I spoke to a DFW biologist recently who said, you know, Lake Lawrence is not one of those lakes that they would require grading on as a default. Because you know, it does have a it has a gate or some sort of barrier on it that doesn't allow salmon to get into that lake. And it's also a stocked lake. It's stocked with warm water fish. So it's got a lot of things working against it to be a place that's hospitable for salmon. So the state would not, you know, it's according to that conversation, would not be requiring grading in those instances on that on that lake. And so so that's kind of that goes back to that discussion just we just had about making sure that you know, all of our permitting staff are are looking at the same data and have the same resources available to them to to know which of these standards would apply.
So with the final arbiter of whether or not a lake is salmon baron need DFW then? And then you'll take the DFW or the the permitting center would take the DFW information as the standard when issuing permits?
I I mean, they're considered the they are going to be the experts, right? So the first thing we're going to do that that any staff are going to do is going to be to look at our geo data, which has all of our GIS resources on it, including all the priority habitats and species information that, you know, all the state's data and research feeds into. So we get that data pushed to us a couple of times a year. I'm not sure how often, at least every six months. And you know, so the latest and greatest data lives in our system. And you know, potentially, we can also reach out to DFW biologists and ask for their feedback. And in any case, you know, permits will ultimately or the project will go before the the state biologists anyway, because they'll require a hydraulic project approval. So they will be looking at it no matter what.
Okay, I that's great to hear because I guess my concern is I I you know, I've seen that letter from Teresa nations at DFW saying that Lake Lawrence is non salmon baron. And since that letter is already out there, they've already made a determination on that. I would hate for somebody at Lake Lawrence then to have to fight their way back through this particular issue if it's already been settled once. Just because, you know, if the salmon conservancy or some other group says, no, there are salmon in there. But we already know from DFW that they do not consider it salmon baron. I would prefer people not to have to fight through that.
And it's 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 been an interesting thing to research, right? Because we have, you know, data is imperfect. And so we have we have data. We have the best data we have. We also have people who have the knowledge, right? And so trying to figure out the most efficient way to connect our planners with that data and not have it be overly burdensome and have it reflect accurate conditions on the ground. That's the needle I'm trying to thread, you know, which has been informed by this public comment that we have had and also my conversations with the state. So I heard support for essentially leaving this as is. And removing the option which would take it out of there's a couple of places in the draft I would just take it out of. Is that something that the planning commission in general would support? Okay, all right, I'm seeing nodding and great. Okay, well, I am gonna take a note on that and then we'll move on. Okay, so and yeah, more to come on the administration side on that. But the draft, I think we can move on 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 that. Okay, so we're still in mooring. Mooring structure standards. So down under. The next issue here is development standards for pilings on peers. So as written, the the document that went to public hearing stated that if you were doing new pilings for a peer, they had to be spaced twenty feet apart. And there was previous conversation by the planning commission to change that to a shorter distance such as eight feet was thrown out during that conversation. So the draft went to hearing with those options. We did hear quite a bit of support for shorter distances. So that is planning committee. Oh. Sorry, Kevin, do you have a question?
I didn't say anything.
Okay, I thought might have been some feedback there. Okay. So I again, in looking with what would the state require when this went to them? And another thought the planning commission could consider. So yes, I think there is support for or the ability for you to have a shorter distance. The twenty feet is not codified in state law. I did look at that what the hydraulic project approval code says for the state. And for both freshwater and marine, there's a there was a statement in there. And this is what DFW would be looking for in a project would be to use the smallest diameter and the number of pilings required to construct a safe structure. And so I don't know if, you know, I'm not I'm not an engineer. So I don't know if eight feet is that number if or if the state's going to say, well, you could get away with twelve and that's what we're going to require. I think if there's a way to avoid a situation where the county would permit something and then the state's going to say something different should be required. You know, that would be good to try to avoid that situation. So I leave all that raw material with you and open.
Can we just use the state's language then and not use a set number?
I I think we we could certainly do that. I yeah, I mean, I think they're that's what they're going to require. And if we mirror that, I think that 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 increases consistency. Doug, your hand went up.
Yeah, why are we telling them how to design a dock or peers or whatever in the SMP? I don't understand why we're doing engineering stuff here. Yeah, when there's it's already covered in the permitting process.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where this language originated. This, you know, I inherited this when I inherited the project. But I don't think we need to. This does not need to stay this way. So.
It seems to me that we go along with what Eric is saying. Why would we go against or put in a number when the state is possibly going to change that? And then whoever is doing this permit is has gone through all this process thinking they could do eight foot. And then the state comes along and says, well, yeah. I I kind of prefer the suggestion of using the state language.
Yeah, and I for the record, I did not. I did not verify with the state that exactly what that how that review would look in this instance. But you know, it does kind of make sense to be consistent with what they're going to look at. And so it also allows for flexibility, right? It, you know, that as they stated, it's it's the smallest diameter and number of pilings required to construct a state's safe structure. So it hits the safety piece. It also hits the, you know, the general language for shoreline modifications in the shoreline management act, which says that modifications, when authorized, should be constructed, you know, in a manner that results in no net loss or is is the minimum necessary to accomplish. So I think if we went along or if this draft went along with that state language, it would accomplish that goal as well. So.
I'd be in favor of removing three and four. I mean.
Yeah.
Well, why are we designing this up? It's not going to take precedence over what the state says.
Well, if we just eliminated all that stuff and use the state's language, I would effectively do that, wouldn't it?
Well, they're not at so the state isn't necessarily prescriptive on on all these things either, I don't think. So I think we want these to be consistent. But I don't I haven't I haven't reviewed it to with that thought in mind that we would just take the entire section and, you know, replace it with the HPA for hydraulic project approval requirements. So I would want to look at that before I commented further.
Yeah, I'd like to know what they were, but it doesn't make any sense to put stuff in here that's going to be irrelevant because another agency is going to govern anyway.
Yeah, and that might be something. Yeah, I would want ecology to weigh in on that, too, because, you know, our master program is supposed to have standards that are appropriate for our local circumstances. And so I could potentially run that to ground there and see if there's any concern or if this would hit any hiccups on approval, if that were something that's done.
Yeah, I would like to just mirror the HPA standards if we could. I think that makes it a lot easier for everybody. And it still gives plenty of flexibility. I'm always concerned if you have hard set numbers like eight feet or ten feet or twenty feet or something like that. If somebody wants to make a dock that's fifteen feet long, well, how do you do that when it's not a multiple of eight, ten or twenty or whatever it is that it's going to be? So just using that state HPA standard sounds like a much better way to do it.
Okay, for three and four. I can. So I can explore that if that is something that if all of you would like me to do that. I mean, I'm happy to look at that. I'm seeing nods. So, okay. Yeah, I'll take another look at that. While I have you here, however, I'll go ahead and just report out on the next one since it's here and and in front of us. And we've talked about it before. So the last or second to last option here in the draft relates to the the width of a pier or a dock that would be allowed. Originally, the draft had said four feet, six feet if necessary for wheelchair access. And then the option that went to public hearing was to consider six feet as the standard with eight feet as the applicant, if the applicant applicant can demonstrate need. We did hear support from the public for allowing wider docks through the the open house and public hearing process. So in consultation with DFW, they pointed to a back again to their HPA requirements and saying that if you're in saltwater, the state is is going to limit it to six feet. That's that's black and white. Well, without any sort of consideration of perhaps a variance or something like that. But what's what's written in as a standard is six feet. And that also for lakes, if again, if you are a lake that contains salmon, limiting those docks to six feet within the first thirty feet of the shoreline to allow for that shallow light transmission into that shallow water habitat. So that was just going to be kind of my heads up to planning commission. If we went into development standard, specifically this development standard that there are state requirements. And again, not wanting to set expectations with the public that we would potentially permit something that the state would not allow. So I'll just I can just leave that there because as it is, I'm going to go back and look at all these things and just see if if we can replace.
Does does the state, Andrew, allow for variances if there's if there's a need?
If now. It's so I I just read through all that stuff very, very briefly again this morning. I'm not. I think they do. There is flexibility. Or if someone proposes something that's better for that would be better for the habitat than what their standards would require. You know, they can consider that. They have flexibility. Let's put it that way. The exact mechanisms, I I don't have them all at the forefront of my brain. Okay, so I am.
Andy, this is Kevin.
Yes.
A question for you. You sound a little hesitant about some of this. And you you have stated that there was public support for for this widening of docks or for this or that, you know, eight foot setback. But there was also a huge amount of public comment that talked about no net loss and the frustrations with that and is it being measured? And what's enforcement going to happen to make that happen? And when will it be measured again in the future and all that type of stuff? So I would just be curious to know from you what you think which items in the shoreline master program that we're addressing could have the most positive impact on no net loss of habitat?
Yeah, I think leaning in, I mean, well, put me on the spot there. You know, any of these things that we are or the planning commission is considering or that the board considers for this draft, anything, you know, where we're allowing impacts. We're going to have to show in our cumulative impacts analysis when we update that 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 we're resulting in that no net loss. And that comes from, you know, a combination of allowing modifications in the correct environments and having the development standards written such that, you know, it's minimizing the impact that project would have. That's where some of these specific development standards come in that we're talking about here. The width and length and using grading and all those things, you know, contribute to how what the impact of a project is. And then also the mitigation you require and then the, you know, the restoration plan. All these things together are what, you know, factor into your known at loss equation. And and the fewer impacts we authorize and the, you know, more thought that goes into the the design of those things and the mitigation required, the more, you know, we require in those ends of things. I think the better we end up in that calculation of no net loss. Because at the end of the day, we have to show how it all balances. So, you know, if we were to allow every every property to have a twenty foot wide dock, we'd have to show where we're balancing that if. So, yeah.
And how would you say we're headed in that direction so far? Are we making a lot of changes or only a few?
Um, I'm not. I haven't tallied it yet. I'm not sure. I mean, I think changes have been made to the draft over time. I also am hoping to continue to receive feedback from ecology as we move forward. We've got some new contact there who has replaced our previous the previous shoreline planner who was assigned to review Thurston County. And so I'm hoping to get feedback from there as well, be long before we get to the period where, you know, the board of county commissioners approve something and it goes to them for review. We want to know kind of as we go along, which things are likely to you know, what's likely to pass muster if there are things that would not pass? Or what is the documentation they're going to need to see? And then if we hit any hiccups in that, you know, we can report out on that earlier rather than later, that something just may not be able to be approved.
But I guess I'm interested in pursuing options where we can make the where we can make the biggest bang for the buck for what what the public is saying they want to see happen. And at the same time, where we can make the biggest bang for the buck in terms of no net loss of habitat. So balancing those out is my interest.
I I think it wouldn't. It wouldn't surprise me at all if that, once you do your communal impact analysis, that once you factor in how we've had our buffers are actually going to extend on the whole and our mitigation value or mitigation requirements have actually gone up some that we, even though we're going for no net loss. That's our target. I think we're going to overshoot our target. We'll actually be having an effective net gain, even though we won't be calling it that. I think that these new buffers and new mitigation is going to get us on the other side of this. Or at least it wouldn't surprise me if that happened once you did the cumulative impact analysis.
Yeah. We shall see. Okay, so I'm going to jump down into appendix B. And that's it's the last option that I had written into the draft that went to public hearing. Whoops, too far. Okay, there we go. So, uh, so here we are in the the uh, standards that are applied for mitigation for authorized impacts to the shoreline. Um, when a new project has an impact within the buffer, there are replanting requirements. Um, and the the there's a calculation that's done based on, you know, what type of of vegetation you're having an impact to. Um, and so the draft SMP states that when you are installing pervious or when your project consists of pervious or semi pervious materials uh, on an existing lawn or non-native vegetation, that you can subtract that pervious area from the area you're required to replant. So basically, if you're doing, your project has pervious or semi pervious materials, it can reduce the your requirement for replanting. Um, and so the conversation that happened before public hearing and the option that went into the draft was to include in that category of pervious or semi pervious construction projects, materials, uh, to include decks in that. Um, the thought being that you have a wooden deck with boards and water goes through the deck and can infiltrate into the ground below. So consider that type of construction to be pervious for the purposes of of calculating this mitigation. Um, so. The, yeah, the question I would have is whether planning commission is ready to incorporate this into the draft? If there's any further discussion you would like to have on this item? Um, again, this is not one that. I'm not recalling if I have feedback on from ecology on the specific one, but, um, you know, this will ultimately, it'll, it would be included in the update, go forward, and we would certainly hear about their thoughts on it. So Doug and Eric are thumbs up on that. Um, Jim, okay, and Scott's nodding, okay? So I will go ahead and I essentially take the option as written and um bake that into the text above. Okay, uh, and the other thing, it was brought to my attention recently just to make sure that when we're calling something pervious or semi pervious, to make sure that's consistent with the drainage manual. Uh, and so I will be doing that. And if there's any, any reconsideration that needs to happen, you know, can come back on that. But, um, I will certainly take a look at that. Okay, so we're going to switch gears then. That is the, I believe, the last option in the draft that went to public hearing. So I'm going to stop sharing and I'm going to relaunch with a PowerPoint. So hopefully everyone is seeing a PowerPoint presentation. And I have finally figured this out that that's what you're seeing. All right, great. Um, so ahead of tonight's work session, uh, I sent planning commission members links to relevant state guidelines, uh, sections of the draft shoreline master program, uh, chapters of the SMP handbook from the state and public comments that all pertain to this conversation of agriculture and the shoreline master program. Um, and this, by the way, for anyone watching at home, this PowerPoint will go up on the planning commission's website tomorrow for anyone who wants a copy. So we heard a lot from the public, um, about agriculture during the SMP public hearing, public comment period. Uh, there was a lot of support for preserving agriculture, for not placing limits on new agriculture um, and just being mindful of, you know, our needs for agricultural land in the future and not not encumbering that. Um, so I put together some information on how the shoreline master program and state guidelines look at agriculture to help frame this conversation. Some of the specific conversations I expect we would have here are what would constitute an abandonment of an agricultural use? Um, discussion of any of the development standards that are proposed for new agricultural activities. Um, and then also, uh, an update on a discussion we had uh, several work sessions ago about how the draft SMP summarizes all of the, um, development activities in the shoreline environment that would be exempt from a substantial development permit. Okay, so one thing we heard from the public was, um, you know, the the shoreline master program should not regulate existing agriculture. And so I put this slide in here to be clear that it does not regulate existing agriculture. And that is by, um, state law that when we have an update like this, um, you can see on the left-hand side, the RCW 9058. Um, so the guidelines that were adopted by ecology and master programs that are developed according to these statutes shall not require modification or limitation of agricultural activities occurring on ag lands. Um, and so that's for existing agriculture. Uh, that that language is also included in the WAC, uh, 17326241 that governs shoreline uses in the middle column there. And then just to show you how that is incorporated into the draft, it's in two sections, uh, in the agricultural provisions. And so we make a statement, uh, in the permitting section for agriculture that says, you know, ag uses and lands that exist at the time of this program adoption would not need to apply for a permit. And that, um, you know, section B, which are the development standards for agriculture, that they, you know, don't require modification of or limit the ag activities occurring on agricultural lands as of the effective date of that program. Don't expect you to memorize this. This is just all here for framing and then for your references we as we have a discussion. So, uh, looking at state guidance and the master program on new agriculture, um, there is guidance from the state that says, you know, you will, master programs will develop, uh, you know, provisions for new agriculture uh on land that is not currently farmed essentially. So I I underlined the, um, the appropriate language there or the relevant language. Um, essentially, master program shall include provisions addressing new agricultural activities on land not meeting definition of agricultural land. Uh, the WAC then goes on to have additional guidance on development standards for shoreline master programs in those uh, numbers three through six. Uh, and that includes a statement that, uh, any ag development that is not specifically exempted um, under 9058 requires a substantial development permit that master programs must use definitions consistent with state law. And then there's further details on the provisions that master programs must include for new ag and and guidance on those. And so the agricultural development standards that are in the shoreline master program draft, they're found in section 19610 and they are, uh, you know, verbatim from the WAC or they are based on WAC language. So everything you'll find in there is either going to be, it's from, it's from the WAC or RCW or, you know, there was guidance on what sort of standards, uh, jurisdictions are to develop. One specific item, uh, we want to talk about is following and abandonment of agricultural land. So you've received public comment asking for consideration of additional circumstances by which the master program would not consider agricultural land to be abandoned. Um, there was also some support or some discussion of that concept at the last planning commission meeting on December 1st. And so staff would like to hear what changes, if any, the planning commission uh, wants to make to the draft, specific text. Uh, and we will also be consulting ecology on this issue just to, again, verify that anything that we are promulgating would would be, um, in alignment with state law. So here is how the master program currently, the draft currently defines abandonment in general. It says that, uh, cessation or vacation of a permitted use or structure through non-action for a period of two years would be considered abandonment. Uh, and then the SMP also allows agricultural land to lie fallow without being considered abandoned. And that is, I put the specific section there, so 19610 before states that if you are purposely leaving it fallow, um, it's not abandonment. Uh, the state definition of agriculture, um, also includes following endormancy. Um, and we adopt all their definitions by reference. So when you look at the definition in the WAC for agricultural activities, I bolded some relevant language here. So the state says if you're allowing land to lie fallow, um, if you are allowing it to lie dormant because of adverse market conditions, uh, because of it's enrolled in a local state or federal conservation program or is subject to a conservation easement, all of those conditions are considered agricultural activities. And so we would consider them agricultural activities as well at the at the county.
But Andrew, we specifically referred to fallow rather than dormant.
In cur- as written currently, yes, yeah, and so.
And fallow requires, we cry, requires tilling.
Mm hmm.
And, um, dormant doesn't.
Right, so, yeah, so, and that's not to say that we can't explore those additional options. I'm just telling you what it, you know, what it currently says, how it's currently laid out, um, to frame that conversation. Um, so, yeah, so, so that's, that's what I wanted to tee up, uh, but, you know, these are kind of the issues here. So how the draft treats abandonment, the ag activities, and that's a discussion that planning commission can now have on specific changes to language. You might want to see whether there's any conversation about any of the development standards that are proposed in the master program based on public comment. Uh, and then the third item, just to bring back an update on, so there was conversation with planning commission several meetings ago. Uh, I believe it was Commissioner Nelson who brought up, uh, some concern about how the draft SMP, um, essentially summarizes the language from the WAC and the RCW. So the WAC and the RCW lays out specifically what instances a development in the shoreline can be considered exempt from getting a substantial development permit. And the the master program kind of took those, summarized them, shrunk them down and put them in the master program. Uh, there was still a statement in there that says, you know, the full language is in the RCW and that's what you need to refer to, but it's confusing because it's not the same language side by side. So we are proposing to actually just go ahead and parrot what's in the the state law and put that in the draft instead so that that will address the the confusion on that issue. So it won't say two separate things, uh, what you see in the shoreline master program draft will match to the letter what you see in the WAC and RCW. So that's an update on that piece. Um, and I welcome any thoughts or conversation on, on any.
Andrew, why, why are we worried about abandonment other than commercial industrial development? I mean, if they got us, if it's, if it's single, if it's residential shoreline, it's going to be residential shoreline, even if somebody event and abandons their house. If it's, it's, if it's farmland, it's farmland. And they'll come back and they can farm it. I guess I don't know what benefit it is to, to the, the, the environment of having abandonment in there other than commercial and industrial properties.
Yeah, and it it ties back to, you know, non-conforming uses and, um, meaning to have a definition for, for when something, when a use has been vacated, right? When, when is it stopped and when would new standards apply? And so ecology requires that we consider those things for non-conforming uses. And, you know, that the state handbook or the SMP handbook on existing structures talks about needing to have a definition for abandonment, um, you know, for all the uses in the shoreline. So I think potentially there is room to change or have additional language or clarification within the development standards, like we already have one there for fallow. Uh, the planning commission could consider or could explore adding to that or having additional language in there that gets to some of these scenarios that you're considering. But it's a, it's a general concept that applies program-wide to the, to the SMP. Uh, and it's just, we're trying to drill down on, you know, what are the specific considerations we might want to, we county might want to make, um, in this specific issue of agriculture.
Andrew, would you mind bringing your PowerPoint back up and going back, uh, four slides for us real quick?
This one?
Okay, uh, go forward one. Um. Go forward one more. When, when we look at 1915100 and talk about abandonment and I I guess I'm getting a little hung up on the difference between permitted use and allows. And since agriculture is always allowed and you don't need a permit for agriculture, that kind of, you can't abandon. I could see how you, in the definition, you can abandon something that was permitted. But if it was never permitted, you're never, you're never abandoning it. If it's allowed, you can't, uh, you can't really abandon something that's allowed. You can only abandon something that's permitted. Where, where am I missing? I think there's a problem with the difference between permitted and allowed that I'm not understanding. Maybe you can get me on the right page.
Well, just keep in mind too, that anything, um, just because something doesn't require a permit does not necessarily mean it's going to be allowed simply because it doesn't need a permit. So, y- you know, you don't necessarily need a permit to, um, you don't need a permit to go plant crops, right? But technically, that's land that you, um, you know, you would, you have never done that on, that's never been farmland. There are development standards in the shoreline master program that would apply. It's the same concept where you don't need a, you don't need a permit, you don't need a building permit, uh, necessarily to get a, like a shed from Home Depot and put that in your yard. But if that's a critical area buffer, there are rules that say you cannot put that there. So it's, it's not something you get need a permit, but it's not also not allowed.
Well, maybe I don't understand where in this, uh, anything that's already farmland in the SMP would need to get the development standard to do farming.
Yeah, so anything that's already, uh, existing in agr- or, excuse me, existing and ongoing agriculture does not require permits for the, from the SMP, does not require the, and so I'll go back to that, this statement right here, right? So there's, you know, nothing in the master program shall limit or require modification of agricultural activities that are, that are already occurring.
Yeah, it's, and it says agriculture uses and land. So if it's already determined to be ag land, then you would never need to do anything to actually farm it. Right? Or am I missing this? Uh, maybe Scott.
Yeah, and I, we can go and look at the definition of ag lands as to what that, what that means. Um, but, but, and I mean, that, that's going to be a call that's made at the time that someone is, you know, seeking approval for something or the question gets asked is, you know, is a permit needed for this? Um, but I think the, the issue to expand upon, um, and I wanted to wait until, um, you know, I was able to bring this information back to you and send you emails, uh, about with with links is to bring up this concept of, you know, a broader, uh, statement saying that ag use would not be abandoned. You know, I think that's the conversation that you're. I think that's the direction we're heading.
All right, I I may, maybe you can give some clarification on this. If it says something is permitted, does that mean it's allowed by permit? And is that different than just being allowed in general?
Okay. Writing that down. And so, I mean, let's. We minimize the. So, okay, so, yeah, so on this slide, that's where you were saying the permitted use or structure. Um, and you're saying if something is allowed versus permitted, would the abandonment ever apply? That's kind of, was that kind of the question? Okay, you're nodding, okay, sorry, I couldn't see your face. Uh, okay. Okay. Okay, because I think in the spirit of, you know, looking at non-conforming or legally conforming or whatever we call these uses, you're looking at something that master program has rules for anything new and you're an existing use that doesn't, those rules don't apply to you as long as you are just keeping and doing that. But at some point, if that use stops, you're still in a geographical space where if you were new, those rules would apply. So is there a trigger where you're going to be considered abandoned and therefore those rules will apply? I mean, as a general concept, you know, that we, we do need that fleshed out in the SMP. Uh, and again, we're just trying to narrow down how the draft would treat this specifically for agriculture. So I can try to look at those things, um, and see if that, you know, helps planning commission move forward on this.
Well, I think so, I think that, you know, whenever I see permitted, it means that it's at the permission of the government. When I see allowed, it means to me that it's done by right. You have the right and you don't need the government's permission to do it. And quite frankly, I think that whenever we're talking about farming, um, I don't want to put any more restrictions on farmers than we absolutely have to.
Mm hmm. Yeah, so is there, in the, in that spirit, is there perhaps other additional texts that you might want to introduce for the, you know, the draft that I could run the ground or?
I think the, the, at the, the least change would be to lay fallow or dormant.
Mm hmm.
So that you include the, the dorm. So that you include the the dormant one.
Yeah, if we can have some wording in there that. That removes any reasons for dormancy or leaving fallow. That the farmer would never have to justify why he did it, he can do it without any explanation to anybody other than himself. I'd feel better about it, I don't think that it's anybody else's business to second guess why a farmer didn't farm this year or for two years or any other reason.
Yeah, I was gonna make a somewhat similar suggestion to as what Doug said and. You know, either add dormant or take fallow out and change it to dormant. In the nineteen six hundred one ten before.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, my mind is worrying with the sideboards, how we would. Control this, but I think as a concept, that's something I can, I can explore, because you know, you want to. I I try to think about the straight face test and, you know, how how do we? Know that something, is there at any point that a use has been discontinued long enough that there's really no evidence of it? Was ag or something like that, but I guess.
I think the big test for is it no longer ag anymore is if they. Started using it for something else that would prevent it from ever being used as ag again, I mean, if you pave over the top of it. Well, sure, you could say it's no longer ag, but if you just, if you didn't farm for a few years. That that doesn't, that doesn't determine anything to me.
Right, yeah, and just for the record, you know, the state requires and we do have in the draft the provisions for conversions. So if you're ag land and you do convert to another use, you know, there's guidance there, it basically says you, you know, you have to. Abide by the rules for the shoreline environment designation and, you know, whatever you're converting to, there would be. Theoretically rules for it in the draft, right, if you're building housing, you'd go you'd go by the residential.
There, yeah, that's totally fair, but other.
And I think, you know, you said the straight fit face test. One thing you have to look at is Thurston County has a policy of no net loss of ag lands. So how can Thurston County say, well, you didn't farm this for two years or three years or whatever, so it's no longer. Farmland. And that that, to me, that violates Thurston County's own policies.
Well, I think what they come back and say is that it now it is new farmland. So now you have to go under the new farmland regulations.
But that is still, if you're. If we expand the buffer or the shoreline. Designation and Thurston County says, oh, you had this much. And now you can't use that much. That's still a net loss. Because you, I mean, that, I mean, that's the problem I have with this policy is. You can't, it's not something you can make more of. So every, every little conversion becomes a net loss.
Yeah, that was, you know, the devil concept has also definitely been on my mind in looking at all this and trying to. Square it all up. Okay. So we have this up, so I'll go back here, are there any other questions or discussions? At this time on this issue of agriculture?
My my main concern with agriculture is has to do with livestock. I had that in my comments and that. I believe that livestock should be kept away, there should be a buffer. Between the shoreline and where feedlots are and livestock. I looked up on the internet. And a cow dumps a hundred and fifty pounds of poop a day. Which is over two hundred times more than a human. And we require septic systems that go through a process. Before it's dumped into the ground to be. Pro, I don't know what it is, but at least a hundred feet away, but I would think we'd want to keep feedlots and livestock. You know, at least. The 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 setback or buffer that we have for the rest of the. SMP.
Yeah, and the development standard in the draft speak to that, so there is a section in or the provision in there specifically for. Confined animal feeding operations, retention and storage zones for feedlot wastes. All those would not be allowed in shoreline jurisdiction unless there is an approved farm management plan, and there's a statement in there about, you know. Buffers and fencing off buffers to, sorry, I'm trying to read while I'm talking. To keep essentially livestock separated from the water bodies, so that that all is in there currently.
Okay, because I didn't catch it, so do you know where that is?
Yes, that is, it's in the ag section, so nineteen six hundred one ten and then B two. Is is all the standards for, all the standards for new ag that would apply, but again, those are only going to apply for something that we would consider. You know, if if this gets adopted tomorrow, people who have been farming for a hundred years are not going to have to go out and make that change, it's only going to be. Okay.
Yeah, just like somebody's got a house, it's forty five feet from the shoreline, they're not going to have to move it back, same thing.
But it doesn't hurt to say it, say it out loud, so, okay. All right. Are there any other thoughts or other things folks want me to look into underground, I'm happy to. Kind of look at tweaks to that one provision about the fallow versus dormant. Anything else?
Well, I want to go back to the exemption part. And this is one of the sticking points for me. Is that in the. Thurston County's plan, it says that all these substantial development. Permit exemptions are summarized. But it's not really summarized, it's a completely different statement. And to me, that that's a concern because. I mean, I think, I know you didn't write this, but I think it says that whoever wrote it either doesn't know what summarize means. Or was flat out just trying to change stuff, because this was brought up in meetings before. And I was told straight up, oh, that's straight out of the. That's straight out of the WAC. And it's clearly not.
Yeah, and I I I agree, I agree that they are not saying exactly the same things in all cases, and that's why. I talked about this with Chris and we agreed that the best way forward on this was to. Strike what is in the draft and replace it verbatim with what's in state law and just be done with it. So that that's the approach that we are are planning to take forward.
Yeah, because that's, I looked at a few others. I can't remember, I know I looked at Clark County, Lewis County, Mason County. Pierce County, one of them I couldn't find on their website, I couldn't even find the Shoreline Management Act. But the other ones either put verbatim what the county, what WAC says, or just reference the WAC. And so I think that's. Especially on things where the, you know, where there's something specific in the WAC that says this, this, this. We need to make sure that that's what we either write or reference. You know, obviously, there's places where it gives us some leeway to make some changes, and that's where we can be different.
Yep, Chris, I see you popped on, did you have anything to add to this piece?
So that conversation note, but I wanted to go back to the previous conversation about fencing off. I'm going to paraphrase, fencing off animals from the shoreline. But when the planning commission gets to that point.
Okay, does anyone have anything on other ag topics other than what Chris just mentioned? If not, okay.
So I want to try and clarify or. Round out this, the conversation. Is the planning commission. Okay with. Having. Grazing animals within the shoreline jurisdiction, or excuse me, within a critical area or within the shoreline jurisdiction. With a farm plan so that we can control how they're. Grazing the land, I'm not talking about feedlots, that's something different, but just grazing animals, the reason I bring this up is because. Controlling biomass on areas. For example, like the organ spotted frog territory or or habitat is difficult to do with machinery and it's. Better, and we're finding ways to do it with grazing animals. By putting them in an area like a wetland buffer. For a short period of time during the driest portion of our seasons, grazing down those particular areas and then pulling them off. But this would all be with a rotational and farm plan mitigation. Maintenance program, but I wanted to get the planning commission's. Perspective on this particular thing based on what I just currently heard.
I I would be against that, because when the rains come, it washes all that stuff right into the. Into the creek river, into the lakes and.
So I would be comfortable with it, I trust your scientific capabilities.
Well, and the other thing to consider is that there are, I mean, probably if you're starting over. You know, or if you're doing something new, you don't have this, but a lot of the places that have. Been around have stock watering rights where. You you have a right to allow your animals to get to. Whatever the water body is, and in our case, it's a river to drink. And there's actually. I don't know if they've changed it yet, but you know, at one time there was actually some resistance to. Pumping the water out of the creek or the river or the lake to the cattle.
I I guess I just have a hard time rationalizing restrictions on people on shoreline residential. And not being able to put a fire pit in their front yard or a swing set for their kids and we let let animals poop in it. You know, it's it's just. I have a hard time rationalizing that. But I agree with Scott, what you just said, you know, I mean, you gotta, you gotta, the animals have to drink. And then you got another faction that says, well, you can't pull the water out because you might damage the fish or some frog or some. Something else, and so it 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 just, it's a circle thing, it just goes around and around and around and.
I think that the standards that we have for, you know, large feedlots and for, you know, storage of. Of this kind of stuff are already pretty good, so if there's. Some grazing down towards water and that kind, that doesn't really concern me, or even for what. Chris was talking about for restoration plans and stuff with a with a farm plan, I think that I'm okay with all that. I certainly wouldn't want to make farmers' lives more difficult by not letting them bring their cattle down to the water that's on next to their land.
Say that last piece again, Eric. Say that last piece again about next to their land.
I I don't want to make farmers' lives harder by all of a sudden taking away their right to water. You know, if if Scott's got cows on his land next to his river, telling him he can't bring his cows down there now all of a sudden. Well, first of all, probably wouldn't fly and end up in court, but second of all, I wouldn't even want him to have to fight that.
But do we have adequate restrictions for feedlots? So that. The manure doesn't end up in the river.
For feedlots, we have.
Feedlots.
Feedlots, yes, for cafos, there are development standards. For those.
Yeah, Doug, if you, if you were ever around a plan for, well, I'm, I don't have experience with. Feedlots, but I have one with a dairy. The the CAFO permit is actually, makes the shoreline management plan look like light reading.
Because all I can remember is driving I ninety, well, before it was I ninety in Allen'sburg by the feedlots there, and it was like. You could roll up your windows, whatever you wanted, but you lost a coat of paint when you went by it on your car.
Yes, standards have changed. But a bit, but thank you, I appreciate your time in this. One particular realm as we look to develop restoration plans.
There's nothing else on these topics that would conclude SMP work session for this evening.
Thanks, thanks, Andrew, are there any other questions or thoughts?
Just just one more, if Andy could give us an update, are we, so we did have a few. SED challenges that we were still going to work through, is that still on the calendar to do?
Yep, it is, yeah, I'm working, yeah, so we've have, as I mentioned, there's a new, there's a new person over at Ecology. And Chris is new newly in the role that was previously occupied by Jennifer. And so I'm circling back and making sure that the approach that we did almost a year ago. Is is the approach that we want to do to look at those, but yes, long story short, they are coming back to you.
Okay, I I know that before the public hearing, before we had our SMP public hearing, that BOCC was getting a little anxious and kind of giving us a directive to move forward. I don't know if they, if the BOCC is still putting pressure for us to. Hurry through this, but I don't want to hurry through it so much that we missed some stuff that we really should go through.
Okay, sorry, didn't mean to split given anybody. The guidance from the Board of County Commissioners is still to. Move swiftly, but to do so in a methodical and thoughtful manner. So they don't want you to be rushed about it, but we do. Need to make sure that we're showing substantial progress in a forward direction. And I think we're doing that.
Well, I'm glad you think that, Kristin. So if there's no other questions for Andrew, then we'll move to staff updates.
And I have no staff updates, besides, everybody should have a great and wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Kristen, same to you, great job.
Has there been any progress on additional?
So the Board of County Commissioners, actually Commissioner Menzer brought that up at Tuesday morning's meeting this past week. Has asked the board office, the clerk of the board, to bring back to the board at their next. Official meeting, which would be after the first of the year, information to start filling the planning commission. Vacancies.
And on to calendars. Our next meeting is January fifth. How are we doing for everybody there? And the next meeting following that would be the nineteenth of January. Does that look good for everybody? Okay, all, looks like we're, we will have a quorum of five for a little bit longer, but we're getting there. So thank you all for another great job, another great day. And I have, hope you all have a happy holidays and Merry Christmas and all that. And we'll see you next year, we're adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone.